City River Bank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meeting is now in session. Today is August 8th, 2017. Today is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
Much like we would even do the flag of the United States of America and do the Republic for which it stands one nation of God.
Let us pray. Oh, we come to you today, Heavenly Father Jesus, with praise and thanksgiving in our hearts. We just thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the leadership that you've given to this city. We thank you for the city staff, for the many employees that come and go, for the citizens, Heavenly Father Jesus, within our community. We just ask tonight, Heavenly Father, that you give them wisdom. Just be with them. Uplift them, Heavenly Father. At times when there's things that's controversial, we just ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you lead them. And with your leadership, we know, Heavenly Father Jesus, will be all for the better. We ask you tonight, if there's someone among us that needs a touch from you, if they need a healing touch, we just ask for that. We ask that you heal this community, bring it together, Heavenly Father. Let each one of us stand and let each one of us say that, yes, this is the greatest little community in this great United States. And we ask that you bless it and bless this great United States of America. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Roll call.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Yeah.
Council Authority Member District 4 Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Yeah.
Council Authority Member District 2 Cindy Fossey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. There'll be no changes to the agenda tonight. Conflicts of interest, any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Do we have any conflicts? Saying none, we'll move on to item 1, consisting of item 1.1, Proclamation National Health Center Week, August 2017. Is Matt Stevens here? Come on up, Matt. City of Riverbank, Proclamation National Health Center Week. Whereas for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventative health care in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's health care system. Whereas as the country's largest primary care network, health centers now serve as the health care home for over 25 million Americans and over 10,000 delivery sites across the nation. Whereas our local community health center, Golden Valley Health Centers, provide critical medical, dental, behavioral health, pharmacy, and specialty services to 150,000 patients throughout Merced and Stanislaus County. And health centers are locally controlled by patient majority boards, ensuring that the patients of each health center are engaged in their own health care decisions. Whereas Golden Valley Health Center is a locally owned and operated nonprofit organization that serves as a critical economic engine, helping to power our local economy by generating millions of dollars in combined economic impact in some of the region's most economically deprived communities. And whereas Golden Valley Health Centers continue to provide an effective means of overcoming barriers to health care access, including geography, language, income, and insurance status. And in doing so, improves health care outcomes and reduces health care costs. Whereas Golden Valley Health Centers reduces overall cost of care by managing chronic conditions and keeping patients out of the cost of their health care settings like hospitals, emergency rooms. And whereas National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to recognize America's health centers, their dedicated staff, board members, and all those responsible for their continued success. During this National Health Center Week, we celebrate the 45th anniversary of Golden Valley Health Centers and the vital role they play in the well-being of our community. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Riverbank, do hereby proclaim August 13th through the 19th, 2017, as National Health Center Week. We encourage all Americans to take part in this week by visiting Golden Valley Health Centers and celebrating the important partnership between America Health Centers and the patients they serve. Sign today. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. First off, thank you very much for this. We appreciate. Primary care providers in the form of community health clinics aren't something that's really recognized a lot. We kind of serve in the background and a lot of people don't recognize the important role that we play in serving those that don't really have access to care anywhere else. As part of our charter, we actually can't refuse care to anybody and our board is all volunteer and they donate a substantial portion of their time and our patients of our health center. So, thank you very much. We're very happy to be in this community and look forward to being fellow ones for quite some time to come.
Item 2, Public Comment. No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comment tonight? Saying none, we're going to move on to the Consent Calendar, consisting of item 3A, Wave Reading. Item 3B, Approval of July 25th, 2017, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3C, A Resolution Approving Final Map 01, TAC 2017, for McRoy Wilbur Diamond Bar Estates, West McRoy Wilbur Communities, VTM Number 01-2014. Is there any comment on the consent calendar or anyone wishing to pull one?
I just need to make a clarification on item 3B.
Okay. 3B?
Okay. I had mentioned that I would, in a future council meeting, give information about the briefing for the recess for the legal California cities. I actually sent that out to everyone in an email, including the city manager, so that's been taken care of.
I know, I saw that. Good job. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Anyone from the public like to comment on the consent calendar? Saying none, I'm bringing it back to the council for a recommendation and our action.
I can make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion to accept the consent calendar and a second.
Council Authority Members Fossey. Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5, Public Hearings. Item 5.1, Conduct the First Reading by Title Only and Introduction of a Proposed Ordinance Amending Title 11. Business Regulations, Chapter 120, Ban on Medical Marijuana Dispensaries and Commercial and Outdoor Cultivation and Amending Title 11, Business Regulations, Chapter 110, Section 110 dot 19, Delivery by Vehicle to Riverbank Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. Donna Kenny, our Planning and Building Manager, will be giving this report tonight. I would like to just note that this is the product of a number of, not only a strategic plan objective by the City Council, but a number of meetings and we expect a number more moving forward. Donna, in particular, has worked very hard with the city attorney's office to craft an ordinance that was representative of the feedback received. I'd also like to kind of point out that since this is a first reading, this is an opportunity for council to make tweaks and adjustments where necessary. And so, Donna, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As you are aware, we've had three cannabis workshops recently. In April, we discussed personal cultivation and in June, we discussed commercial cultivation, warehousing, and manufacture of marijuana, as well as retail dispensaries and lab testing facilities at another meeting. Currently, Title 11, Chapter 120, is a ban on medical marijuana dispensaries. It bans all cannabis operations and activities except for indoor grows. So, in putting this ordinance together, we tried to, staff tried to take all the information and direction provided by you. And so, to start out with cannabis delivery, it isn't something that was discussed at the workshops, but it is an integral piece of what is happening in the culture today. There are deliveries that come in from out of town, as well as if we do allow cannabis operations in the future, there will be deliveries within town as well. So, in our ordinance, in order to conduct a cannabis delivery, you would need a Type 10 or Type 12 state license. This would apply to deliveries within the city from businesses that have a permanent location outside the city. They would pay a quarterly fee per year as determined by the council. So, right now, this ordinance applies to any other businesses that are outside our city limits, that bring in bakery or gasoline. They're supposed to have a license with a fee per quarter of, per quarter year of $10, which hasn't been revised in a long time, so we did change that as to, as determined by the council. So, when we move forward, if this is approved and we start looking at the fees for all these individual operations, that is another fee that we'll need to consider. It would require a city business license, employee permits, and a security plan. Cannabis dispensaries. The direction from council was you would possibly like to see one dispensary for every 16,000 in population, which would mean that we wouldn't entertain the idea of a second one until we reach 32,000 in population. And we're approximately 25,000 right now. Dispensaries would be a minimum of 600 feet from schools, daycares, and youth centers, which are defined within our ordinance. It would require a development agreement. And we've, upon direction from you, we've added these, all these commercial designations. The C2 District, the CM, which is Commercial Industrial, Cannery District, Highway Boulevard, Downtown General, Downtown Core, Light Industrial, and Research and Development Zoning Districts. And I've got maps farther on in our presentation, we can go over this. But these were all the commercial and industrial designations that might possibly support dispensaries. And, you know, you can pick and choose. If there's a zoning district up there that you don't think is appropriate, we can pull it out. Personal use cultivation. We would develop an administrative cultivation permit that would be handled through planning and building. It would have a yearly renewal. Property owner permission is required. It says a maximum of six plants per parcel, but we've had a discussion with the city attorneys recently and it would be six plants per personal residence. So, if, say, there is an apartment building, say, six units, the landlord was amicable for allowing that to happen, each person could have the six plants within their home. The residents would require, we would require the residents to remain occupied with the functioning kitchen, bathrooms, and garage for their intended purposes. If a person, say, came in, wanted to do an extension to their garage and they could meet setbacks and they could meet zoning, height restrictions, we could work with them on doing a separate room that's attached to the garage or to the house as well, or a greenhouse, as long as it's on that property. Commercial cultivation, indoors only with a development agreement. The Cannery District has been kind of bounced around as the possible zoning district, but we also have an Industrial District and a Light Industrial District, M1, as well. This would require, besides the development agreement, a conditional use permit, employee permits, a secure building, security plan, insurance, and a waste management plan. The cannabis testing lab. We had heard from council some direction that one for every 16,000 in population as well, with a conditional use permit within our list of commercial zoning districts. Okay, so here's our zoning map. So, for the, let's see, most of our C2 zoning is along Patterson Road here, with a few parcels scattered throughout the city. Many of these would not be on the list of being able to support, say, a lab or dispensary because of their proximity to schools and daycare facilities and the youth center. We also have the CM Zone. There's only a few parcels in here with the CM Zone. And M1 as well, which is the Industrial zoning, which we have very few parcels zoned for that. In the downtown specific plan, we have the Cannery District here. We have the Highway Boulevard District, which is a commercial zoning district. We have Downtown General and Downtown Commercial. And then for, out at the LRA, if that was a consideration as well, this piece of property here is the one that the city will be receiving shortly. And according to the specific plan, these are zoned Research and Development and these are zoned Industrial. So, that would be an option if the council so desires to include this in the ordinance as well. Any ordinance concerning the regulation of cannabis should be consistent with the general plan, which is our city should be safe and healthy for our residents. I think as a community, we believe that if cannabis is coming, we should be able to regulate it and keep it safe for our citizens. Amendments to ordinances are not projects, so SEQA is not required for this. And it is recommended that the council introduce and pass to a second reading the ordinance with any changes that you so desire. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Before we bring it to council for questions, this is a public hearing and I open it up with public comments. Do we have anyone for public comment?
Downtown resident, specific plan resident. And it appears that the majority of this is being dumped on our laps. The big majority of it, which will have an unfair impact to our property values. Downtown's unique from the rest of the city because it has a mixed-use type of thing with residential areas, commercial, and mixed residential commercial, which puts a greater impact on the health and safety of the residents downtown. You have an intersection in that thing regarding the chemicals, poisons, toxins, carcinogens, that you're allowed to be used with a license. And yet, you're going to allow this to be used in the proximity of residential neighborhoods? This stuff needs to be out away from where it can cause health and safety issues. They shouldn't all be dumped downtown in one area. Especially when you're going to allow using chemicals. Now, when it states those chemicals are for cultivation, I'm guessing if you're going to allow them to use that for personal cultivation, they're going to be using them in greater quantities for commercial cultivation rather than just the personal part. There's several things that, none of these changes to allow this in a land uses downtown, none of the property owners have been notified of any of this. I just, you guys, I know you guys, none of you live downtown, except for Leanne, none of you is familiar with downtown. Because you don't live down there. You have to live down there to really understand it, how it works. But I'm telling you, you're going to have a big issue with health and safety putting this stuff all downtown with these chemicals. The odors and the stuff and I think the thing said refers to the odors and the sound from cultivating and all this stuff is not based on your noise organs, but it's based on somebody with, what'd you call it, reasonable sensitivity or something like that? There's no such thing. It depends on if you're a kid, if you're elderly, if you're ill. There's no such thing as reasonable. Either it is or it isn't. Same way with the sound. You have a noise ordinance, but apparently this isn't going to be compatible with the noise ordinance because it doesn't agree with it. That's the other problem you have, is it's not compatible with your specific plan and your others. But I really urge you to take a good look at where downtown works and don't dump it all on us.
Have any further public comment?
Hi, Ed Nusiel from Modesto. I have a little experience and a couple of suggestions and I know Modesto City Council, for whatever that's worth, is thinking about a few ideas with this too. One, Modesto City is thinking about and probably going to establish what are called like a green zone. A specific area within the city where, only within that area, you can have pot dispensaries, rather than allowing it in any commercial or M1 or whatever kind of area scattered about the city. It allows you to sort of keep them isolated in a fixed area to minimize interference with other businesses and crime and nuisance factors. As well as it also allows, for Modesto anticipating three or four dispensaries, it allows for them to maybe have, if they're in one area, maybe a little bit more city police patrol in that area. Just a little bit, just in case something happens, rather than having them all across town, which would be harder to enforce. So, those I think are good ideas. I own a little commercial warehouse off Keenan and Pentecost, kind of by the Elks Lodge in Modesto, and I've owned it about a year and a half. And one fellow against the law opened, there's about, I think, 13 units in that complex. He opened a pot dispensary and thank God has since gone out of there. But some of the things maybe you don't realize is, yes, there are some elderly that show up and yes, they have medical reasons, but of course, there's going to be a lot of youth and this and that hanging around and some of them frankly are a little bit less than desirable. And they have a tendency to hang around and loiter, sample their smoking products out in the parking lot by their cars, turning on music and hanging out for an hour or whatever, leaving trash, causing parking issues, that sort of thing. So, something to require that either their security system or program they have at a pot dispensary shoo's everybody away after their purchase. It's kind of like you can't go to a liquor store and sit out front and drink a bottle of booze. It's just not a good idea. And so, also the smell. I mean, it actually, when I would go over to our warehouse, I mean, I actually kind of be, you know, getting nauseated from it because there's so many kids hanging out in the parking lot, playing music and whatnot. The other thing too is, part of doing a kind of a green zone, I would definitely advise that you don't have it near any other retail businesses. Kids gymnastics, dance, I don't care what it is. Parts and truck lifts and modifications because it can be a nuisance factor. So, again, having a green zone where they're kind of isolated by themselves makes good sense for a lot of reasons. Thank you.
Will there be any other further public comment? Saying none, I'm bringing it back to the City Council. I would like to take a look at the cannabis testing lab. I don't believe we stated 16,000 for the laboratory. We said 16,000 per dispensary. And I'd like to have it remain open to what the commercial businesses within the allowable areas could stand. If it's two labs or it doesn't mean that they're processing anything but other than the testing, whether it's out at the LRA or it's down at some other area.
Okay, I will remove that.
And I'd like to have the consent. I don't believe we said that. I think we just said-
No, we didn't put a number on that one. We did not.
And we may want to adjust that, you know, if the, if we're approaching the 32,000 and there is a need for another dispensary, if we allow this, that it would be on a case basis, not strictly 32,000, we get another one automatically. I know we all have comments. I just want to, you know, someone spoke about illegal dispensaries. In that county, it's illegal to have a dispensary, yet there's 24 of them. And if you don't try to control it, if you say no to it, then it's going to happen and you have no control. So, if you bring in a dispensary and you have it well-controlled and well-maintained and the ordinance says that you can't smoke it outside, then it's illegal even to pop a beer outside of the liquor store or O'Brien's Market. That me? I thought it was giving good feedback. As to the public comment about the smells and the noise, I would like to see if we can offer a visit to one of the production areas that has no smell because of the scrubbers, has no noise. And you can shake your head and comment, but it's... We don't have a conversation. But this is one that we have well-planned, well-written. Thank you.
I have some comments and questions and I guess I'll go next. Where do I start? I actually got a chance to tour a dispensary. Shocker, never thought I'd be doing that in the name of City Council up here. It was one of my former council members and it was actually quite to the contrary. I guess I had some preconceived notions of what I was going to see and what to expect and clientele. And it was quite different than what was described from another comment up there. There were not any loitering at all. In fact, it would have been completely inappropriate to have anybody loitering there. It was, I guess the word I wanted to use was seedy. I expected it to be. I thought I was going to a seedy part of town to see this and it was, I have to say, I was very shocked that it was not that way at all. And I think my other council member might agree with that, that it was- And I think my other council member might agree with that, that it was quite an eye opener on many different levels. But, so that was kind of comforting. I know I've been a proponent up here and kind of voiced my opinion in thinking that we need to kind of think about this in some other ways, you know, than traditionally it's been the war on drugs and that kind of stuff. But I do, and I want to make it public, that I have some concerns and reserves mainly because we're setting precedent here that no one's done before. And I don't expect that we're going to get it perfect. I know this is going to be a work in progress. I know there might be some hiccups and bumps along the way. And I kind of shared some concerns of mine with the city manager. I was, I said, well, I've got some, what if we go down and do all this and it turns out to be, you know, it doesn't pan out like we think it is and it just, you know, takes a left turn? Do we have options to pull the plug and change it? And he assured me that we do, and those are written into the ordinances. So with all that said and done, and Sean, maybe you can kind of back me up here on what we were talking about because he had some good things, kind of to ease some of my nervousness. Even after all that said and done, I am for everything anyhow. I really like the ordinances, but I did have a couple of questions. So one of them was about inspectors, and we can maybe get into that a minute, but the other one was just some concerns on what happens if we go down this road. And my example was if we have a business that comes in and that business is not doing what they said they were going to do and we're not happy with them, there's nothing we can do to say, hey, you know, you're out of here. And that was one of my concerns because I think we've run into that in some situations that we can all think of in here, that we have some concern, current businesses that we're not happy that are producing with what they said they're going to produce. So maybe you can, we had a conversation.
So Vice Mayor Jones Cruz had mentioned that the concern is that, you know, we don't have a crystal ball here, and so we don't know, it's going to be very difficult for us to know any one of the potential hazards that could lead down the road. But I think as council has discussed, we already are experiencing some of the hazards as is. And the way that the ordinance has been designed is to set maximum levels of control that council has. In fact, with regard to, there's a section 120.08 of the ordinance which talks a lot about suspension and termination. And one of the things that the development agreement will do is it will set up for those businesses that are operating, if council approves those, a set of triggers. And council can discuss and determine when they're going through those development agreements, how strict they would like to be on those, up into no tolerance policies for any variety of issues you may have. So the whole point of a development agreement is that it provides multiple levels of public review and then it acts as a land-related contract between the agency and the private business or the landowner in most cases so that those performance measures are met and we do avoid some of those problems. So if there is a way to protect the city to the greatest extent while still being somewhat permissive, this is the way to do it.
The only other thing, and I don't have too many more things on here, but the only other thing I had was a comment question about the inspectors. I noticed it in there with the indoor grows, we had two inspections. And again, if we're going to do this, we need to make it reasonable that folks are going to go get the permit. And again, I'll just say I'm not for two inspections. One, do we have, are they going to certify our inspector? Is our current inspector going to be the new cannabis inspector? I mean, does he know anything about it? You know, where are, and do we have the finances? So that was some of my concerns and questions about this whole inspection and all the stuff that goes into it and the fees. I mean, I know they charge me 75 bucks to come out and inspect my hot water heater, but, you know, what are they going to charge and do we have a grasp on that? Because I didn't see, and maybe I'm getting too nitpicky, but that was just another one of my comments as I'm going through the ordinance.
Well, I was the one that requested the inspections. First off, a lot of individuals aren't going to go down and get the proper material. So you have to make sure that your home is safe for electrical and water use and also the ventilation portion of it to prevent the black mold. And you also have to ensure that it is secure away from people 21 and younger. It has to be a locked facility. Now, I'm not saying that a person 17 isn't going to find a way to get into it for get mom's stash or dad's stash, but it has to be reasonable that it is secure away from the family unit, that they're not abusing, removing a bathroom from, you know, and it's an annual inspection just to ensure that they're maintaining the integrity of the grow, the security. And if someone has an issue or let's say there's a, the biggest fears are from zero to five years old, okay? Infant contact usually from secondhand smoke or someone using directly and breastfeeding directly. Those are areas where they've had some significant incidents in other states. California, it's not going to happen because they say we do it smarter. The other thing too is the contact between 12 and 17 years old. And all those are the ones that are going to find the edibles and they're going to try them and not know how many they can eat. So the inspections have to be placed on the homeowner or the grower to give them reasonable assurance that they're maintaining a secure and safe environment for those who are not around, I mean, or not old enough to take care of it. So that's the reason why there's two. It's an annual inspection thereafter just to maintain their permission to grow. We can't stop them from growing unless they violate the law. And so we're giving them a structure to keep them reasonably safe. Now, the inspectors are going to go into a home, usually if they're licensed, they'll allow them to come on in. If they're not licensed, you're not going to send an inspector in. You'll send the law enforcement in.
If I might ask for some clarification then, the way that ordinance is written, it has two inspections up front plus the annual inspection. So it sounds more like we could just use, they would apply for the permit, we would do the one inspection to make sure everything is fine and then follow up with an annual inspection.
Now, that could be different for the commercial grow. We can have inspections as they are building out, ensuring that their wastewater, their waste management plan is proper, that most of the grows will be self-contained in the water use so there won't be much discharge or consumption once they set up.
So this would be just for the administrative cannabis permits for private homeowners? Okay, thank you.
Are you done?
I just had the last thing I had, and then I'm done. I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay.
Well, I just think it's important that, because I know if I had a lot of questions and I had a lot of information and resources to me, I'd like it, since we're talking about it. We've discussed that this is a monetary, a cash-only business and because of FDIC laws and banking laws, which kind of brings a whole nother aspect into this. But my question was to the city manager, did we have any issues with collecting fees and because that's connected with this also? And I just thought it was an interesting comment and would like that out here.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask the city attorney a way into it here, but this was one of my questions to legal was that very issue. And the important distinction is that we are charging for services associated with the impacts that we expect to have from these uses, which is part and parcel, from my understanding, different than some more direct relationship. The other important component that, you know, we talked to the city attorney about is that, you know, at this point, more than half of the states in the union have some form of legalization. And so many, many, many arrangements exist like this, and to my knowledge, there hasn't been any legal matters related to it, at least from a federal perspective.
That's correct. And we, in other jurisdictions, since cash is the only form of payment, we've accepted that long as you account for it, haven't had any issues.
Some of them are becoming more creative in developing a co-op for a credit union type setup, which would allow them to deposit in cash and lend, but they would not be in the federal system yet.
That's correct. And actually, there are some cities in the state who are looking to have their own bank potentially, so we'll be watching that. As you said, it's an evolving field. We're all here in the beginning, and it's kind of the ultimate entrepreneurship for the applicants and definitely a new area for municipal government, which is changing at least every week.
And it's probably going to change nationally too because the federal government authorized $0 for cannabis pursuit.
Yes, and I wanted to, that reminds me of another point I want to clarify. Some people have asked, well, what happens if the attorney general decides to clamp down? In the development agreement that we will ultimately have, if you approve this, there's a clause that will say if we receive a cease-
...
Incorporated that into an agreement with another city previously.
Member Campbell. Okay, just a few things. First of all, everybody knows, it's here, it's the law. If we just ignore it and do nothing, like I see some cities doing, I think that would be a big mistake. Secondly, we've done a lot of reading about what's happened in other states that have done this already in the past several years, and I think we've learned some things from that. There will still be mistakes made, but I think we've done a lot of research on this council and our staff has in trying to put together a good document that will protect us from things in the beginning. Will the document be perfect? No. We will have to tweak it somewhat here and there, but we're doing the best we can with the knowledge that we had from prior experience and problems that were created in other states and trying to put together that something that will eliminate some of those problems, hopefully. So we do as a council have the power to tweak it when we so see fit if there's a problem that we did overlook that, say, becomes a real problem. Thirdly, this is recreational. Recreation costs money. It's that simple. It's not a necessity. It's recreational, a big part of it. I'm not talking about the medical part, but the recreational part is something that should generate at least enough funds to cover the management of it to protect this community. And that's what we're trying to put together. And lastly, I think a key portion here, part here too, I thought that Ed made a very good point about the loitering. Well, I think we have loitering laws and they'll probably still try it anyway. I think from what the mayor said about the illegal dispensaries in the county, the 24, we need to enforce very heavily in the beginning to make the point that Riverbank is not going to tolerate these kind of situations. Maybe we should put something in there with cannabis dispensaries that no loitering is allowed out there, and it's illegal to smoke the stuff in public anyway. So I would say as a beginning place to start from, I think you put together, the staff has put together a great document to start with, along with input from the council. I agree with the mayor and council member Jones Cruz about only having one inspection instead of two and then going with the annual. And I know it'll have to be tweaked some, but I think it's a good starting point.
Okay, I was fortunate to be able to go and visit one of the dispensaries, and I truly was impressed also. It was not the kind of, I don't know, establishment that I thought I was going to walk into and see. I don't know. It, like I said, I was just really impressed about just actually how everything was all set up, how everything was, you know, as far as the traffic, how it's controlled, how people coming in and out, how people are not loitering on the inside. They, you know, have to leave. There's a security guard outside, and I'm sure he has more reinforcements if needed. Like I said, I was just really impressed. But one of the things that I would like to see in the commercial cultivation businesses is a risk management plan. I know that we don't know what's going to happen, but I would like for the city to be connected to some kind of plan that they will have to look at, you know, maybe what the worst scenario will be or maybe what the, you know, who knows what's going to happen? But I just want us to have some kind of risk management plan in place or at least it's thought about what may happen. And I said, I don't know what that will look like, but just maybe to have something thought about. And then I think that there is a misconception about the waste management piece. And Donna, if you could explain what you told me about how the green plants are, you know, shredded and it's really like no harm to the environment. The water is, you know, recycled and reused and there's no harsh chemicals and all that kind of stuff. Okay?
Correct. What we're looking at is each business to have a waste management plan. Because there are plants that die, there are some leaves that they don't use, so these would be ground up, chopped up and put with 50% cardboard or paper, and they could go to the landfill to be composted. We did also put some language in here so if, you know, something comes in the future and there's a way to recycle it into clothing or to rope or something like that, then that could be covered by a business's development agreement or a conditional use permit. So it would be up to the city whether or not something like that would happen. Many of these grows are more hydroponic where they recycle the water and thus recycle the nutrients as well. And basically, it's a weed. It doesn't use a lot of water compared to other plants. Fortunately for the southern part of the Central Valley, those farmers that are looking to grow hemp will not need near as much water as other crops that they might entertain in growing. So there is less impact than a lot of your standard orchards and like corn crops.
I have a couple of questions. When I'm looking through the ordinance, it talks about employee permits. I don't know that this is something that should be in the ordinance. And I look at this and when I was talking to Sean, I said, do we have this in here for beer and wine, where they sell beer and wine? I don't believe we do. So why is it in here? And why? This is a business that's going to be very watched, and I can't imagine anybody is going to hire somebody that they themselves, without being told, are not going to do some type of check on. So I'm not sure why we're adding it in here. It sounds like we're telling them what they have to do with their employees, and we don't do that with other businesses, so.
If I remember correctly, we took the ordinance that Waterford was looking at and pulled out many of the components of theirs, not all of it, but many of their components, and I believe this might have been one of them. I guess staff was envisioning this more of like a background check, like you do when you hire somebody to work in the recreation department, but, you know, this is totally up to you. It's your ordinance.
I don't know that we should be involved in their hiring. I don't know that-
Not involved in their hiring, but we're involved in the background checks of their employees.
But we don't require it of any other business. Why would we require it of this?
We do require it of schools, not us, but the schools.
Is it an ordinance?
But it's also for working with children, yes.
The ordinances have-
But the reason for that is that you want to, you want one entity, which would be the sheriff's department, doing the background checks so you have continuity, so you can keep out some of the individuals undesired. This is a labor-intensive operation for the grow, and you're going to have turnover in- And you're going to have turnover in personnel, so you, you want to be able to, to have a minimum, no, no felons. We have to do a background check to make sure that these, uh, that are coming on in are not felons.
I understand that, and I, I understand a lot of businesses do that. I mean, we do that from where I work. But it's not an ordinance telling us we have to do it. And I just find it odd that it's in this ordinance several times.
State law requires that, well, prohibits felons from.
He's back there in the corner hiding.
He's hiding, yes. All right, we're stating the question. And we're talking about, uh, background checks, and is it legal for us to give a felon a license? For meadow, for marijuana, to grow, depending if it's drug-related or not, I guess.
There are certain types of felonies that prohibit a person from owning a business, such as being convicted of embezzlement, um, child-related crimes, um, things of that sort, things that would relate to running a business. As far as the employees employed by the business, that's a separate entity, that's, it's a separate issue. It's more of a business operations question. Uh, the city may, at its purview, choose to further regulate the types of individual, individuals that may work at a business, but that's entirely up to you.
Do you know if there's any other cities that do this? Is this a common practice?
Common, I wouldn't say anything is common in this field right now. But it really depends on what you're comfortable with. There are some cities, like she stated, that do have something like this. There are other cities that do not. Um, there are some cities that just simply require a background check, and it's not necessarily a permit, per se, um, but it's totally up to you.
Maybe it's, maybe that's what it is, is that word permit. I, um, it just, it's odd to me, and I just think it's a business decision. I don't think it's something that we should be doing. Like I said, this is a business that's going to have a lot of people watching it. Can't imagine they're going to go out and hire ten felons to work with them, um, but. Are you too, on that one?
Can we keep it in and revisit it later?
Can we ask them to put it in the risk management plan?
Or, or in the, uh, development agreement until such time that.
Yeah, it, we, if you wanted, you could, uh, like I said, this is, this is just the basics. And so, when you get into a negotiated development agreement, that's certainly something that we can w- work in, as council says, you know, we'd like to make sure that all of your employees are background checked for, with none of these specific issues.
Maybe changing the verbiage from employee permits to, um, employee requirements or something. Permits just sounds like you're buying a dog license or something, it just sounds odd to me.
We could change it to say that, um, employee, uh, employment at, at these facilities will be referenced in the development agreement, or some such language. Okay, we'll work that out.
Um, the other thi- you're, you can go back here.
I'm here whenever you ask me.
Um, the other comment I had is, um, I agree that we need to have something in here that, um, addresses the loitering. Whether it's under signage, that they have to have signs that say, no loitering, or under security, where they have to have some type of person that, like you guys said, there was a security guard outside, obviously, that's to prevent, talked about, the security. Did they? Yeah, yeah, the security is addressed in here. So, there's a security plan. So, it's a fencing plan, lighting plan, camera layout, security team plan. I just want to make sure that we, um, have that in there so that we don't have what this gentleman had mentioned, where they're outside of the building, are taking, or just outside the building, loitering, uh, making it uncomfortable for the area that they're in. So, that say, there, there's a grocery store or something, that people going in and out.
We can specifically add loitering throughout the ordinance. And remember also, the commercial businesses also have to get a conditional use permit and make that a condition, and then if they violate a condition, you, we can always pull the conditional use permit.
That's a great idea, because if you have a comp, a business that's doing, and they have a lot of loitering, and they're permitting it, that would be a reason that we would want to close.
I think in this case, though, when you have a illegal dispensary, you're really not going to care as much as if you have a legal one, and you have a conditional use, I mean.
Well, if we have it in the conditional use, then we have it, we have a way to address it if it becomes an issue.
Wouldn't be an issue, I'm sure. Okay.
If I might add something as well, that I meant to, um, say earlier, is there will be other items coming before this council. Uh, for example, we'll be bringing you an item on setting fees for many of these permits. There'll be an item on, um, excuse me. Now, let me look here real quick. I apologize for that. Oh, um, an assessment of staff, as far as code compliance officers go, whether or not we would need more staff or not. And there's a third one. Oh, the most important one. Um, if you decide to move forward on this, uh, we have mentioned several different zoning districts, um, for these uses. So, staff will need to go back into the zoning code and, um, add this use as, underneath these individual zoning. So, there will, and then when you, um, go through the DA process, that will go through Planning Commission before it comes to City Council. So, there'll be plenty of opportunities for folks to have additional public comments on this item.
Any other comments? Okay, I'd like to have a motion on item five one. If it's for approval, it is with the, uh, modifications to eliminate sixteen thousand per residents in the testing. Uh, one inspection initial for the, uh, private grows with just an annual, to include a risk manage, management plan for dispensaries and for the commercial growth, to eliminate comments about employment permits and have any employment issues discussed in the, uh, developing agreement, as well as, uh, addressing loitering throughout.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this first reading with those mentioned changes.
With motion to approve item one, five point one, with modifications and a second, to allow this to be, uh, which will initiate the second reading on August twenty-second.
Yes. Robert Martinez. Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much, staff. That was long do- long time, but well done.
And the comments that we have from the public also.
Yes. Item six one, a resolution adopting either track one or track two of the statewide trash provisions ordered by the State Water Resources Control Board under section one three three eight three, to meet the state water, stateside water quality objective for zero trash.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this evening, Kathleen Klicker, Development Services Administration Manager, is going to introduce a consultant who's here this evening to, uh, give a presentation on this new requirement and, and the recommended option of the two that are being considered tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Um, so tonight, um, you're going to be asked to either adopt track one or track two of the statewide trash provision order that was issued by the State Water Resources Control Board. Um, I'd like to introduce Steve Teraskus with WGR. Um, Steve has been instrumental in assisting the city of Riverbank, as well as a lot of other cities within Stanislaus and San Joaquin County to meet their stormwater, um, requirements. And he's going to give you an overview of the trash provision, and also explain, uh, the two different tracks and what it means to the city of Riverbank, so.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, and council members. I'm Steve Teraskus with WGR Southwest, uh, we're your stormwater consultants. And, um, as Kathleen said, we are going to look at, uh, the statewide trash provisions, and, uh, really at the end of this, we're going to be looking at two options, a track one or track two approach. So, we'll dive right in and kind of look at what each of those, um, options entail. So, on April seventh, two thousand fifteen, uh, the trash amendments were adopted, um, by the state of California, and the, um, uh, s- the state board, excuse me. Um, and basically, they adopted these provisions to create a water quality objective. And that water quality objective is essentially zero trash being discharged from storm drain systems. Now, um, part of this provision was to, um, uh, basically sidestep a, another route they could go, which would be, create a total maximum daily load, which is another way to, um, kind of call it a pollutant concern for our region. Um, but what the route they went is basically allowing this to open up further permits, and not just your permit, there'll be pretty much every stormwater permit in the state will see trash, uh, requirements in one way or another. Um, so, once again, a zero, um, objective for trash, and then, um, it establishes the prohibition of trash, um, where it's discharge of surface wa- surface waters of the state. So, on, um, June second, two thousand seventeen, uh, the city of Riverbank actually received a thirteen three eighty-three letter, um, from the state of California. Um, this letter, uh, was sent to all municipal permittees, uh, city, um, cities and counties that were already not covered under this trash amendment. LA and the Bay Area, um, have already been in this for quite a while. Uh, these letters were essentially orders required the municipality to make a decision, as we, uh, discussed before, and, um, make the filings and middles to the regional board. So, starting September second, two thousand seventeen, we are going to need to make a decision, um, either pick the track one, full capture route, or the track two, full capture equivalent route, and then also provide some pr- preliminary documentation. Now, we're going to dive extensively into each of those tracks, but, um, just to kind of close the loop on what that letter was asking us, um, also fifteen months after that September deadline, uh, December, uh, second, two thousand eighteen, um, if you chose track two, the final, um, implementation guidance documents, uh, would be required at that time. So, looking at both of these tracks, track one requires the cities to install, operate, and maintain full capture devices. And when we talk full capture devices, it's down to five millimeters or greater in the, uh, municipal-owned stormwater system. Uh, and where it's required is within your priority land uses. We're going to define that in just a moment, but let me define track two first. Uh, track two is install, operate, and maintain any combination of full capture devices or other, um, the, uh, other controls, such as multi-beneficial projects, treatment controls, institutional controls that achieve the same rate as track one. So, remember, five-millimeter trash is track one capture. So, any of these other combination of controls, we have to get to track one level. So, if you're wondering how small five millimeters is, we're not looking at that screw, we're looking at the screw head. So, the, the typical screw head is about five millimeters. Another illustration is a pencil eraser. When I first heard this regulation coming out, um, they were talking a lot about cigarette butts. And I was thinking, oh, that's not so bad. No, it's cigarette butt inverted on the side, uh, you know, the cylinder, that is five millimeters. So, when we talk about priority land uses, um, where we're going to need to establish these controls, uh, the permit, or I'm sorry, the, uh, um, the thirteen three eighty-three letter, the trash provisions are calling out high-density residential. So, uh, they define those as, um, greater than ten units in a, uh, per acre. So, typically, we're going to be looking at apartments, condominiums, townhouses, um, highly, um, developed areas. Uh, industrial areas, commercial areas, um, so fast-food establishments, uh, shopping centers, gas stations, all falling there, commercial, uh, mixed urban, um, so a little bit of everything, uh, that would also be considered a priority land use. And then this is really the catch-all, is, uh, public transportation stations, where, uh, facilities or, or sites where, uh, transit agencies are loading or unloading. That's not necessarily a station, that is also considered bus stops. So, that greatly, greatly, uh, expands our priority land uses by that definition. So, dissecting full capture a little bit more in track one, um, the, um, the letter defined track one as a full capture device, a treatment control, a series of treatment controls, including not limited to multi-benefit project, uh, projects or low-impact development controls. Um, to define low-impact development, um, for those of you who aren't routinely involved in stormwater, that's basically where we allow water to infiltrate and not go into our stormwater system, so, uh, allow groundwater recharge, or hold on site, allow it to percolate or evaporate, evaporate. Um, that is typically, um, what low-impact development is. So, um, a lot of our park basins and things like that would be considered, either multi-benefit projects or, uh, low-impact development. Um, and so, what we have to size these units to is capable of handling peak flow rates from a one-year, one-hour storm. So, that's basically saying that, uh, we need to size this to a, a typical storm. You know, we usually see a good-sized storm, probably not this last year, we probably had several of these. But on a typical year, um, probably also discounting the drought, um, you know, you're, you're going to see these storms. So, it, basically, what they're saying here is, we can't flood, um, or the, the devices that we're going to select cannot flood, um, appropriately designed to handle at least the same flow or corresponding, uh, as a corresponding drain. So, if we're going to put something in a drainage structure, we can inhibit, um, the drainage. So, again, that's, um, speaking to flooding concerns. So, here's a couple of examples. Um, there are, uh, approved devices that the state has, um, allowed, and, and it asks, if we're going track one, we have to select an approved device. And now, the state of California, um, the Central Valley, uh, region in particular, has not, um, approved their own set of approved devices. Uh, they are using LA's and the Bay Area's, uh, set of approved devices. And so, they're readily out there, um, there, there's all sorts. Uh, this first, uh, slide here shows, uh, individual catch basin, uh, full capture devices. So, um, if you walked outside and walked up to a storm drain, uh, a device like this would, uh, be installed. Uh, the other, uh, type of devices that can be used are inline devices or end-to-pipe treatment. This is probably more typical, especially for smaller municipalities. Um, there's quite a bit of cost and, and maintenance, um, installing full capture devices in every single drain inlet in those priority land uses. So, if we can allow all the water to, uh, flow to the end of the pipe, or near the end of the pipe, and, and install, uh, full capture devices, um, I'm not going to lie, it's still going to be, um, expensive, but it's probably going to be less maintenance, um, and, and there are several options. So, um, just kind of start, uh, starting at the top, that's, that's a inline trash screen, um, kind of the top two down there. Uh, the lower right-hand corner are, uh, storm, uh, stormwater vaults. Uh, um, basically, they're the end of pipe and, uh, allow drop, uh, trash to drop out, um, uh, through water movement. And then the lower left-hand corner are probably the cheapest, um, most economical option, and then there are trash screens, um, whi- which is basically just netting. Um, that is, uh, spec'd to the five-millimeter size. Okay, so, once again, the trash, uh, full capture trash, um, devices must be certified by the executive director of the water board, or they're desig- designated. Um, uncertified, uh, full capture devices, if the city elected to install their own knockoff version of any of these, unfortunately, that would not be, um, accepted by the water board. You must install, uh, the certified devices on their list. Um, the current certified list is comprised of small units, so that first slide we showed you of individual drain inlets, um, and, and then high-flow capacity devices, kind of those end-to-pipe or, or mid-pipe, um, units. And so, the costs vary from hundreds of dollars to thousands of dollars per, uh, to around a thousand dollars per. per catch basin insert, if you install the individual units. And the end-of-pipe of high flow can greatly vary, hundreds of thousands to, it can go up from there. So city staff, in a limited preliminary cost study, identified that if we want the individual route for catch basins, there's about 807 in the city, and that would cost approximately $448,000, $100,000, with an ongoing maintenance of right around $100,000 each year. Full capture end-of-pipe units, the second slide we showed you, kind of showed you in the lower right-hand corner, these CDS vortex-type units. Just in initial preliminary cost study, they found that those would be around $150,000 per unit. Okay, so looking at the Track 1 cost analysis, you would be incurring, of course, the capital cost of the units over the, and this can be spread over 10 years, and ongoing maintenance for those units would be indefinite beyond the 10 years. Other considerations prior to selecting Track 1, is it feasible to install regional full capture devices? Now, that just depends on the city's current drainage structure alignment. Is it possible to put some of these units in? So that would definitely be a question to explore and do the due diligence on. How many catch basins or outfalls does the municipality currently have in the priority land uses? That's a little bit of a study, but as we saw, that the priority land uses cover most of the city. So I believe the city has approximately eight outfalls. So further study would need to be done to ensure that all of those actually are in the priority land uses. Okay, a quick look at Track 2. It's basically the equivalency of Track 1. So install and operate any combination of full-captured systems. So we just talked about those. So that would possibly be individual inlet controls would be an example of a partial full capture system, and going some of these other routes, multi-beneficial projects, and LID treatment controls would be other acceptable combinations. Institutional controls, and the way these are defined are some practices that you guys are probably already doing. So street sweeping, code enforcement, drain maintenance, those are all examples of institutional controls that could be leveraged to achieve full capture equivalency. But at the end of the day, the city has to demonstrate that the approach will achieve full equivalency to those full capture devices. So in order to demonstrate that, regardless of which track the city decides to go, we need to develop and submit a jurisdiction map of the drainage area, including priority land use areas. So very similar to the previous presentation where I was seeing the different zones of usage, we're identifying these priority land uses and overlaying them on the stormwater map. The preliminary map is due regardless of which approach we take on September 2nd, along with the track selection. And then a finalized map would be due 15 months after that. Okay, if we select Track 2, performing a trash assessment to identify existing levels of trash, so it would be boots on the ground, looking at these priority land use areas, and essentially ranking them based off of what is seen. There is, in your packet of materials, you'll see what came with the letter, a trash assessment minimum level effort, or TAMLY. And in that document, it describes this process of going out and doing assessments. Now, the assessment process is only required if you're selecting Track 2. Develop and submit an implementation plan that will be reviewed and approved by the regional board. And it needs to include the rationale for the selection of the combination controls that will achieve full capture. So if we choose that we're going to hand out more brochures, increase street sweeping an extra day a week, and maybe put one or two inlet controls in place, the Water Board at the end of the day is going to decide if that's equivalent to a full capture device. So there will be some kind of scrutiny on whether they agree with our approach or not. The rationale for how full capture equivalency will be demonstrated. So there's going to be ongoing monitoring. We're going to need to go out and prove that these other controls that we've put in place are effective and continually to work, and on a continual basis, working. A description of alternative methods used, so if we take in a different approach to the assessment, we'd also need to spell that out. However, the assessment that they provided is a very simple assessment, albeit time-consuming. If we choose a different alternative, or we can suggest an alternative land use to the priority land use, if it wasn't feasible to use a priority land use or install a control in place, we can make that case at that time, but that is probably not typical. Other considerations prior to selecting Track 2, and I think we've danced all around this one, is what will the regional board approve for the implementation plan at the end of the day? Is what we're proposing, are they going to accept? And how much back and forth from there? Demonstrating the equivalency through a combination of controls may still require a capital cost. We talked about a combination approach to meeting full capture. So there still is a capital expenditure with going Track 2. Does the municipality have internal resources to perform the assessments, develop and carry out the implementation plan? There's monitoring, there's tracking, there's annual reporting. It's quite a bit of administrative burden looking at Track 2. So just a quick synopsis of the Track 2 cost analysis. Initial capital cost for full capture and other system improvements, so the treatment controls, and those can all be rolled out over 10 years. We have 10 years either track we choose. There's an initial administrative cost, so the assessment, having boots on the ground and looking at all of our priority land use areas. Development of a plan, the back and forth with the Water Board on whether that plan is going to be approved or not, that is a real administrative cost, ongoing administrative costs, the monitoring and implementation plans. And of course, whatever we install, there's going to be ongoing maintenance indefinitely. Okay, so just to reinforce the timeline, the trash amendments were adopted on December 15th, or December 2nd, 2015. So that actually started our 10-year clock. June 2nd, 2017, we received our 13-383 letter asking us to make a decision. So on September 2nd, 2017, we have to make that selection, either Track 1 or Track 2. And then if we did select Track 2, you would need to follow up with all of your implementation plan documentation and updated maps 15 months later. And then finally, it's kind of interesting how the Water Board worded this one, but by December 2025, or no later than December 2030, come into full compliance on this. So staff, after a thorough review of Track 1 and Track 2, is recommending to the city council that Track 1 be selected for implementation. The city will have until December 2025 to fully meet requirements of full trash capture. Staff feels that Track 2 would require the same results within the next 10 years, but would involve more assessments, monitoring, and mapping, which would require additional staff time to meet these requirements. So with that, I'd gladly feel any questions, comments?
This is an unfunded mandate?
Yes.
I thought the state was going to help out an unfunded mandate.
Oh, let me back up. Let me back up. I can't make that decision.
You said yes.
I said yes. This is actually being tested as an unfunded mandate. There are some test cases that started in Los Angeles. The trash policy is definitely one of those that is being named as an unfunded mandate. Is it an unfunded mandate as of the second, according to the state Water Board and the regional board? No, they are pointing back to the Clean Water Act, to the federal regulation, as their authority to implement this.
So you're saying that the federal government will provide the funding?
I'm not saying that. It's a federal...
They're just saying it's not a new mandate.
New mandate.
Couple of issues that I see is that we have not totally defined stormwater. Right now, Hertzburg 231 is out there trying to make the definition of stormwater with sewer. It was separated in 1972, so therefore, that separation takes stormwater into a different classification. We want to bring it back home. If it does that, then we could start capturing some funding to do our stormwater. The city of Riverbank is on the cutting edge. We're trying to do a regional water, stormwater management plan, which would capture all the stormwater and help hold it for retention, either through the catch basins, being able to transfer that water around, or bring it over to the wastewater treatment plant for storage and percolation. But that plan, it's a plan, but it needs to be implemented through the development. Sorry, developers. With that stormwater management plan, we should be capturing all water, preventing any outflows, outfalls that we have. What do we have?
I believe eight outfalls.
Eight outfalls. With the help of Caltrans, since they help provide the water going into those outfalls, you know, we might be able to capture some of that money, but we're going to need some type of funding source. And you just, what do they expect us to get this funding source if Hertzburg 231 doesn't, isn't signed?
There are some other sources of funding that have been brought up in stormwater casca, the partnership groups, one of which is calling this a trash issue. You're collecting trash, and that's...
So I put it to the trash, Jilton's contract?
Well, the funding...
But they won't be doing that.
Well, the funding could come through your trash fees.
How many out there like that idea? Schools are exempt?
If the school is in the priority land use area, any water entering the stormwater system would be considered, mean to be in either Track 1 or Track 2 compliance. So it's water running off into the streets, into the city's stormwater system.
You know, they've been exempt for, they've been exempt for a lot of the stormwater previously. If they're not exempt, then maybe we can hit the school who has no money for some funding. No matter what, though, it's a considerable cost. And until we find the funding sources, no matter what we pick, we're just idle until we can fund it. You recommended which one? Track 1?
Quick stop.
Yeah, and hopefully, hopefully, we can have some...
I don't know a lot of pot.
Oh, we're looking at, Stanislaus County has PFFs. This is also concerns to the county. Okay, so hopefully, they can share PFFs to help fund some of these previously known mandates back to whatever time that was.
Every city, county in this area is looking at this exact issue right now. So Stanislaus County, I believe, is considering Track 1 also.
At the wastewater treatment plant, we already capture some of the trash that goes through. And so would it be in our best interest to put some other kind of device at the wastewater treatment that would capture that, what did you say, that .5 something?
More than likely, at the trash facility, I spoke with another municipality, and they're catching down to 3-millimeters with the wastewater. So more than likely, and I'm not a wastewater person, I'm a stormwater person, and two different permits, but more than likely, there are controls already in place.
How do we decide which one of these?
I don't know, it's not that big.
I know we don't have to decide today, but...
Oh, we do.
We do today, which one of these?
Today, you're deciding.
Oh, I am?
Well, I think you have to look at what time the personnel. Track 2 requires a lot of work by a personnel or hiring a consultant to do it, whereas 1, we already know what devices we can select from, we just have to find the money and put them in. So I think Track 1 is the choice, based on personnel and...
Well, what I'm...
You're a popular guy at council meetings, aren't you?
I'm just presenting the facts, ma'am.
I do have one other question. That you said that the state doesn't have real policies to define this stuff. You're just sort of right now using LA and San Francisco models. And that bothers me, because what happens is all of a sudden, the state decides they don't like their model, they change it.
Let me clarify. The Central Valley has not approved their own devices that would meet Track 1 compliance. LA and the Bay Area, who've been doing this for quite a while, do have an extensive list of approved devices. What I was trying to get to, and apologize if I wasn't clear, is the Central Valley has not established their own list.
But the state has approved their devices in LA County, in LA and...
The regional boards in LA and the Bay Area have.
Typically, they would approve them here.
They have stated that those two are the approved list for the time being.
As we're moving forward with, let's say we do the regional stormwater management plan, where we capture all water and retain, that would be sufficient for preventing and not having those?
Yes, and you would probably switch over to a Track 2 approach at that point, because you would not be installing.
And then with, if Hertzburg passes, then we can start charging in the sewer bill for stormwater.
So if we pick, we're saying we're not necessarily stuck with it, if we...
Right, so, but we are stuck if we start Track 2.
You're not stuck. I actually did send a email to the Water Board, and I believe I forwarded it to Kathleen. And I asked that question, are the municipalities signing blood on September 2nd here? And they said, no, you're not. If you, and the response in the email paraphrasing was, if you select Track 1, you need to be fairly certain that Track 1 could be accomplished in that 15-month time period. Because if you switch back to Track 2, that whole portion that was going to be due at the end of 15 months, you're going to be behind. And so their concern is, you know, you're going to have some catch-up to do if you come in late in the ballgame.
I'm looking at 2022. I'm not looking at 2017. Okay. All right. No, we have to go for public comment. All right? Do we have any public comment on item 6.1? Seeing none, I bring it back to the city council for some type of resolution.
I make a motion that we accept Track 1 as stated in this particular item.
Second that motion.
Item 6.1, Track 1, we have a motion to approve and a second.
Councilmembers Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you. Item 6.2, resolution approving and adopting the revised City of Riverbank expenditure plan project list for Measure L funds and approve a $130, $130,000 loan from the LTP, LTF to complete the projects.
Thank you, Mayor. Kathleen, Creaker Development Services Administration Manager and road expert will be giving this report tonight.
Good evening again, Mayor, and members of the council. So tonight we have the City of Riverbank's proposed five-year expenditure plan project list that's been revised. So tonight for city councils to consider adopting the recommended changes to the City of Riverbank's Measure L expenditure plan project list for local streets and roads, traffic management, and bike and pedestrian improvement projects, and approve a loan from the local transportation fund, LTF, to complete a slurry seal project early fall of 2017, and the funds will be repaid upon the receipt of Measure L funds. So on November 8th, 2016, Stanislaus County voters approved a half-cent sales tax measure to fund local and regional transportation projects and programs. StanCOG requested that each city and county develop a 25-year project list. So an initial list was developed and presented to the city council for review, and it was approved in June 14th of 2016. At that time, we'd stated that we'd be coming back annually and with updates to that list if they need be. The list was compiled from the city's capital improvement and pavement management plans, and the projects identified in the plan detailed a comprehensive list of infrastructure improvements that were identified as priority projects. So the revised expenditure plan project list has been downsized from 25 years to a five-year plan. StanCOG initially wanted the 25-year plan, but for the city, now we can go ahead and do a five-year plan, which is more realistic for planning purposes. For fiscal year 2017, 2018, StanCOG has received the following funds for the month of April earmarked for Riverbank. So those are the funds that have come in for each of the categories there. They're currently still being held by StanCOG. So StanCOG will begin releasing those funds once the jurisdictions have finalized a Measure L policies and jurisdiction agreements. At that time, each jurisdiction will be paid their full allocation of funds and thereafter on a monthly basis. So also note that the state controllers office will always be three months behind in remitting the funds to StanCOG for distribution. So since the city is not currently in receipt of funding from the one-half sales tax measure, the city is requesting approval from the city council to loan $130,000 in LTF monies to the Measure L fund to complete a slurry seal project early fall of 2017. A larger slurry seal project will be scheduled for late spring of 2018 when we have more funds that have come in. So this is hard to see, I apologize, but there are some copies in the back for the public, and then you have copies there. But this is the fall 2017 list of streets that we've identified and are started looking at developing plans for this so that we can get this done for the, the residents. They pass the tax, and I know it's important to council to show the residents that their money is, that they're paying is, we're, we're making improvements. So just to go over real quickly, the proposed expenditure plan for local roads and streets, the city is projected to receive 656, a little more than 656,000 annually to fund these projects. And then for traffic management, it's 131,330. And bicycle and pedestrian is 65,665 annually. And like I said, this started in April. Right now, we do not have any funds at all. So here is the new revised list. And so we have, this year, we want to do the slurry seal project, and like I said, in early fall. Then we have the rest of the funding. When we receive that, we'd like to do one in the spring of next year. And then we have some RSTP funds to do an overlay on 8th Street, Claus Road, and Kentucky. And so what we're going to do is use some of the Measure L funds to use as match funds for those projects. For traffic management, we have a signalization intersection at Calendar Avenue and signalized intersection for, at Santa Fe and Calendar.
Has that been approved by, I read that in the report. Has that been approved by Caltrans?
No, we are working with Caltrans on developing some type of a design for that. It is in our system development fees, that, that, that project, and...
And we're seeing Caltrans in September?
Yes, we are.
They can provide us some funding so that they can match funds?
That would be great. Also a signalized intersection at Claus Road in California. And then bike and pedestrian, we have Jacob Myers Park entryway, making some improvements there and adding some ADA improvements and a new path. And then Calendar Avenue Complete Street Plan, that is on the Caltrans right of way. So that would be another project that would be great for us to see if we can get Caltrans to help us with some funding to improve that corridor, to make it walkable for the residents, especially over by the church, where, you know, it'd be nice if people could walk to church and not have to worry about, you know, crossing that street. So we have some bike striping that we've outlined. So these projects will help to maintain and preserve the city's transportation system infrastructure and create opportunities for non-motorized connectivity. The list will be reviewed annually, and any changes or adjustments to the list will be brought before the city council for approval. And just so I make it clear also, the slurry seal project, we'd like to move forward with today, but any other projects that are listed on that list, we would bring those to you to get your approval before we move forward on those. So tonight, I'm asking the city council to consider adopting the proposed changes to the Measure L expenditure plan for local streets and roads, traffic management, and bike and pedestrian improvements, and approve a loan from the local transportation fund, LTF, to complete a slurry seal project early fall of 2017, and those funds will be repaid upon the receipt of the Measure L funds. So are there any comments or questions?
Just one on slurry seal. When is the optimal time for doing that type of operation?
Um, when it's not too hot and before it gets too cold. So we're going to try and get it done early fall.
Okay.
So we're, we're, we're working diligently on that, so.
We'll get some additional funding from Measure L?
From Measure L? Those are just the funds that StanCOG has right now are just for April. So they're going to keep coming in. So once the agreements are all signed, we will be made whole, and then we'll be receiving, we should be receiving monthly increments after that. So, yes.
Basically, get any questions about the pedestrian paths and bicycling? How do we determine what streets we're going to do for that?
For pedestrian and bikes? Well, what I'd like to do is we have the opportunity to resubmit our active transportation applications. So one of those active transportation applications was for a plan, and the city needs a plan. So I'm hoping, you know, keeping our fingers crossed that we get that. We can work with the schools, work with the residents, hold community meetings, set up an active transportation plan that can basically, then we can do projects off of that plan. So right now, currently, we don't have a plan. So it's where there's a need. If we have a resident that comes in and states that there's a need, that's, that's how we've been determining it. But we really need the plan to, to really, you know, move forward and connect the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. This looks great.
Do we have any public comment?
Scott McRitchie, Riverbank, of mayor, members of the council. To show that I'm a complete jerk with everybody, on page three, it's actually the back of the second page, we have from a half sales tax measure, half a what? Half a bread, half a gallon, half a dozen eggs, half a, I'm sorry, Sean, that's what I do to people. Any rate, side error there. The other question I had is the LTF funds, are they part of the general fund? Or where do they come? They're separate?
They're separate funds, sir. They're the local transportation funds that come between federal and state that we can use for specific projects. We try using those with stay money to try increasing, enhancing any of our projects that we have.
Okay. I'm glad to see you have a five-year plan. A 25-year plan is complete idiocy. Even in a city as progressive as ours, when we had a 20-year plan, the first new subdivision was changed from high density to low density. They just don't work. 25 years, we may have in 10 years all electric cars. So where's the gas money going to come from? So I applaud you for the, the five-year thing. I think that's, that's good. I'm not big on borrowing to pay ahead, but if it's a specific fund and not part of the general fund, then I feel a bit better about it because we're already having problems with the general fund. So, thank you.
Just to continue on that, sir, the, the funding is there. StanCOG doesn't know how the sales tax is actually working and how to get it. I heard just yes, Monday, yesterday, that, well, the state is going to pay us all of our funding a year from now. They don't understand the sales tax, how it gets there. They'll get a monthly payment, and then every fourth month, they'll get a true-up, which was actual what we received. And they're, since this is a new fund, they're saying, well, they're only going to fund us 80% of 90%. That's not true. So they're getting used to the LTF, I mean, the Measure L funding. And once they get into the stream of it, the scheme of it, and we get this agreement between StanCOG and all the cities and the county, then they will release the funds. So the funds will be paid back immediately to the LTF.
As long as we have the funds and the, and the one fund to do that with. I just don't like borrowing and not having it and counting on somebody else, and then they're, you know, paid by the quarter instead of the, right on the first day and all the rest of it, and then we end up, you know, loss of interest, so on and so forth. So that was my concern.
Okay. Do we have a recommendation on item 6.2?
Make a motion that we accept item 6.2.
I second that motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 6.2.
Council members, Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item 6.3, resolution of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, authorizing the expenditure of awarded housing-related parks grant fund for, one, the renovation of the community pool locker rooms and ADA improvement, two, the partial renovation of the community center. And there was a third one. Please read that for me.
Yes, Mayor. There's a third option, which Sue is going to explain, but it's essentially to hold off on a decision this evening. And let me just, if it's okay, step into that just for a second. So we could maybe avoid a lengthy discussion on this if Sue presents this third option. But essentially what's happened is that we received a grant. The grant was less than, for two projects originally applied for. The grant was less than the amount of money we had applied for, so we said, well, you know, we need council to kind of weigh in on which of the two projects, the community center or the pool, we do. And, you know, there are certainly pros and cons to each of them. Sue came up with a really good and creative idea. And Sue, if you wouldn't mind, kind of give him that.
So Mayor, members of the council, the idea that, that I was thinking of as far as the option three that kind of came to me later is if we waited, we have a CDBG grant, community block grant coming up, and we just went through a webinar, and the application will come out in September. It'll be due in December, and then we'll be notified of awards in March. So that's not that far away. And the community center building does qualify for that project, that grant. So there is a potential that if we waited a little bit, came back in March to council and said, hey, we got this community block grant to fund the community center building, we won't have to make a choice. We could do both projects. We still will have the time to complete the housing-related parks grant that we do have in, in time, by the deadline. So that was the option three, is maybe just go for this grant, see if we get it, and then go from there. So...
Hey, that sounds good. We can continue. There's also another thing, too, is PFFs are out there for parks. And I'm starting, commencing tomorrow, start negotiations with the county on redefining what our parks, regional parks are, that we can capture some of the PFFs, as well as the other eight cities, all collectively negotiating with the county. So at least, if nothing's short, Jacob Myers Park would be considered a regional park. But some of our other ones, such as the, the pool, can be considered a regional because it does do regional, have regional activities. So we'll, by springtime, we may be sitting a little better than we are right now.
The worst case is we come back in March and we say that we didn't get the CDBG grant, and then we can have the same conversation, and we can either do the pool renovations, which we'd have enough money for, or do a partial of the community center building. And, you know, which we don't, we don't have enough to finish the whole project. But meanwhile, what we thought we could do was, and this was part of this whole idea, is in August and September, get back with our architect, have them update our numbers, because it's been three years really since we've looked closely at that, those conceptual designs. Have them relook at those, update our numbers, and kind of see if we couldn't do the whole community center building, maybe do partial of it, and how could, how could that work out if that was a decision we made, too?
Since this is agenda eyes, is there any public comment on item 6.3? Seeing none, with the consensus of the council, I'd like to continue this item. Okay, with the consensus of the council, we continuing this item. Comments and reports, item 7.1, staff?
No additional updates tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Item 7.2, council authority members, council member Fossey?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody, school starts this week. As a parent, yay. But be careful, watch out there for kids, watch for the buses, be aware. And I also wanted to just take a minute to thank the chamber for the Friday night farmer's market. While there wasn't a lot of participation by farmers, and it was really hot, so there wasn't a lot of participation from the citizens, I think it's a good start to try to get the farmer's market back into building, building it up and having more farmers come. And I was very grateful that was there a couple times. I went in and got some fruit and vegetables. I just wanted to thank them.
Council member Campbell?
I attended a meeting today of the Stanislaus County Youth Development Committee, which is a subcommittee for the Stanislaus County Work Alliance Board. And I'll be putting together some information that I just got this afternoon that will go on our website so that the public will be informed for students 17, ages 17 to 24. There's new ways that they can get training, grants, and et cetera, through this particular committee that we're going to be explaining and doing more with. So look for that down the road here.
Council member Barbara Martinez?
I just want to briefly mention the focus on prevention, that there was a dedication to the access center for the homeless. It was a real nice dedication to know, and also to know that it's a one-stop shop so that the homeless can receive a variety of services. I understand they had a soft opening, there were a lot of people that came to it, and I'm just glad to see that this is just the beginning, just for, you know, those that need those kinds of services. I want to thank the staff for the wonderful reports that we had. Also, again, want to thank the public for all the information that they gave us about the cannabis, their experiences. This is new territory for us, and we're excited while, you know, at the same time, don't know what's going to happen in the future, but we're just glad to partner with these businesses and move our city forward, so I just want to say thank you.
Vice Mayor.
The only thing my fellow folks have not covered is there are some openings on the Budget Advisory Committee, and I would encourage folks out there to step up and volunteer for some of these committees, and that's all I have.
We also have openings on the Planning Commission, but we have two applicants which I need to interview. Okay? And then I'll bring forward a recommendation. Just bear with me about 90 seconds. The county has a great tax structure. They have property taxes for all the property in the county. They get property taxes on every piece of property. Once you develop a piece of property, the county, after the schools get their 70%, special districts get their percent, the remaining percentage, almost 14%, will go to the counties, and only 6% goes to the cities, which is a disparity because we still have the roads maintained, the parks to maintain, and there is no liability for the county within that jurisdiction. They even keep the road money that should be allocated to the roads that the cities take over. Starting tomorrow, we have discussions with the eight, total of nine cities, to get together and collectively discuss with the county a renegotiated tax sharing agreement. We're not doing it to be punitive. What we're doing is ensuring that the county can be sustainable and the cities can be sustainable with this tax-sharing agreement. Mayor Postacelli County did a study on tax-sharing agreement and took a look at the most punitive, they called it punitive, and which is Stanislaus, and others which are sharing 50-50. I don't expect a 50-50. I would like to have a 35 or 40% of the share of the entire amount, but I don't think that will come out. But we're willing to negotiate with the county. So, there may be some comments and press, but it's for the betterment of both the county and the city. We're not trying to be punitive in that. With that, there are PFS, which is property facilities fees. And these fees are extremely restrictive towards development. The county wants us to be doubled in size by 50-50, I mean, 20-50, 50-50, that we could do that. But it's 20-50, but yet it is so restrictive for development that development is going towards Tracy and for other counties which can meet those. So, hey, let's not grow, let's stay the same, we could do that. But then the state will say, if you can't meet your arena, which are numbers, regional housing numbers, if you don't meet those, we'll take away your transportation funding. We'll take away all your other funding. So, we're in a catch-22. So, we're going to try to negotiate with the county on how to do development that will satisfy the state, satisfy the growth, satisfy the sustainability of both the counties and the cities, and not become punitive either through the city, I mean, the county, or with the state. So, we're going to start that process tomorrow. And it's open to the public, it will happen at series, Chamber of, Chamber, City Council chambers, and it starts at 5:30 PM. So, you're welcome to come by and put your two cents worth in, and we'll collect it. With that, okay, so it was longer than 90 seconds. We're proceeding to item eight, consisting of item 8.1, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code 54957.6. Agency representative, Sean Scully, city manager, employee organizations, Riverbank miscellaneous employees, Riverbank mid-management bargaining unit. Item 8.2, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision, drawable, of government code 54956.9, one potential case. At this time, members from the public, comment on any of these two items? Do I have any public comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned to closed session. Thank you.